Good evening and welcome to the Glen County Board of Education meeting for September the 14th. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Jürgen for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. And Lord, tonight, we come to you with heavy hearts. Lord, our families, our community, our school system has suffered loss. Lord, we ask that you be with those families that have suffered that loss. Lord, help, just grant them the comfort and the understanding in this time of grieving. Lord, we ask that you be with our school system and our community as we are fighting this heavy deadly disease. Lord, please, just use your healing powers to help us, only, only the way that you can do. Lord, we ask these things in your son's name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Jürgen. Alrighty, alright, that brings us down to Ms. Tate with the spotlight on Glen County.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Recently, CB Greer, Satilla Marsh, and St. Simon's Elementary Schools were named among eighty-four public schools in Georgia to the Georgia Department of Education's 2020-2021 Distinguished Schools List. Golden Isles and Sterling Elementary Schools are among one hundred and fifty-seven reward schools to that list as well. Tonight, Mrs. Leslie Scarborough, our Director of Federal Title and Great Programs, is here to tell you more.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to give you a little bit of information about what the Title I Achievement Program for schools is all about. The reward schools, the Title I Reward Schools are schools, Title I Schools that rank in the top five percent of Title I Schools in the state, making the most progress in improving the performance in the all-students group over the most recent two years on statewide assessments. For those two schools, that is Sterling Elementary and Golden Isles Elementary, so we're very proud of them for that achievement. And beyond that, we have our Title I Distinguished Schools. Title I Distinguished Schools are schools that rank in the top five percent school-wide programs in the state, and they have the highest absolute performance for all student groups based on the current statewide assessments. So those schools are Satilla Marsh, St. Simon's Elementary, and Greer Elementary. So we just wanted to present them to the board and tell them what a wonderful job they've done, and we appreciate what they've done, because it does make our county look wonderful.
Do you want me to come in first?
Come on.
Okay, come on in. Go ahead and introduce yourselves. Some of y'all are very new.
Steven Brooks, Principal Sterling Elementary.
Charlie Brady Jr., Principal Satilla Marsh Elementary.
Jonathan Herr, Principal Greer.
I'm Kate Ginn, I'm the Principal at Tate Simon's Elementary.
Tracy Renee, Principal Golden Isles.
Can I make a quick photo of my people?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank y'all for y'all's hard work.
I brought my team with me, and if they can't be seen, they're gonna be upset.
Bring them in, bring them in.
Come here, Satilla. My leadership team, so they put in a lot of the hard work, too.
Go ahead and introduce the Dr. Brady.
This is Ms. Selena Robinson, Assistant Principal.
Tiny Sanders, our counselor.
Vincy Ziegler, our instructional coach.
Ms. Floyd. She's first grade.
I'm Ms. Johnson.
We got a little thing. First grade, Krista Robinson, who is also our Teacher of the Year, our Tody, at Satilla Marsh Elementary. Taylor Priest is fifth grade, Ms. Adrianne Williams is fourth grade, and Mrs. Charity Hill, who's leading our PBIS team, and she also teaches fourth grade.
Congratulations. Thank y'all.
Can you get Ms. Sanders to speak for us?
It's on the golf course.
Thank you, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Alrighty, that brings us down to the citizens address the board portion. Before we get started, I'm gonna read this preamble. "The Board of Education has adopted a policy that permits citizens, under certain circumstances, to address the board on a variety of topics of general concern to the operation of our schools. We welcome visitors to the board meetings and are interested in hearing from the taxpayers and patients of our school system. We have a few simple rules for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board must sign the roster. Each person is limited to five minutes, and the public portion, excuse me, public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed thirty minutes. Any citizen who has a specific complaint involving an employee must first address this issue with the superintendent, and if not resolved, then may request to speak with the board. However, certain matters involving personnel and students must be heard in closed session. The superintendent will inform you whether your complaint is one which should be referred to an executive session with the board. By signing this sheet, you are agreeing to abide by these rules." Alright, and first, we have Patrick Colley. Mr. Colley? Patrick Colley? Ms. Colley? Patrick Colley? He's the first person to sign the roster.
It's me.
Alright.
That's me. Everybody can hear me alright?
Yes, sir.
So, real quickly, my name is Patrick Colley. I am here tonight representing a daughter and three granddaughters that are still in the Glen County schools with the subject of mask mandates. Before I get started, I have a FaceTime which, we have Dr. Daniel Bird. He's a private practice from Atlanta Medical, and he's also been an internist with specialty in cardiology for over sixty years. His patients range from teenagers to elderly. And I'm gonna ask him a few questions, if you don't mind. I'm gonna put it on the mic. Doctor, you can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So the first question was, tell us a little bit about your background, real quickly, doctor, please.
Well, I practiced medicine nineteen sixty-eight. Practiced, I trained at Atlanta Medical, which was Georgia Baptist back then, from sixty-four to sixty-eight. Went into private practice, and have been ever since. Still an active practice.
Well, thank you. Our first question, doctor, would be, how does wearing a mask all day for children impact CO2 levels?
Definitely. I've seen some studies that show that for short-term, it does not, but the study, like, for three minutes. But I've seen studies where they put a probe up behind a mask on somebody, and within about five to ten minutes, they had toxic levels of CO2 built up.
Right, and that's something we'll be discussing further on as the evening goes on. How about their impact on asthma and respiratory?
Any kind of pulmonary problems they might have is gonna be definitely impacted negatively by wearing the mask, because it restricts oxygen flow and it builds up the CO2.
Okay, you can still hear me?
I can hear you.
The impact and ability to learn by re-breathing your own gases?
Ah, anytime you build up CO2, it inhibits your ability to think. It causes, you know, decreased thinking ability, can cause confusion, can cause dizziness, and actually, you can have syncope from it.
Right.
Which means black.
Secondary consequences of your inability when facial interaction is limited?
Yes, definitely. Children learn by looking at the expressions of their friends. When you communicate, you look at facial expressions, it's what you do, what they're saying. With a mask on, you can't tell what they're thinking, they might say something, but you have an idea of what they're actually thinking. I think this is definitely impairing their ability to communicate.
What about the impact on disabled children?
Ah, worse, because, I mean, they depend totally on things like this. So anybody who's disabled, they depend on all their senses to communicate.
Thank you. Impact on mental acuity and functionality for short-term and long-term?
No, short-term, it might not impact it. Over time, it would definitely impact it.
Okay. Side effects of conditioning of children wearing masks?
Psychologically, it's definitely an impairment. One of the problems is, they learn to be submissive. Like, they told to wear a mask, or they wear a mask, and they become submissive. And that's, you know, for a child, that's terribly important, for them to be independent and not submissive to some authority.
From your experience, have masks proven to protect children from this virus?
No, masks do not protect anybody from the virus. In fact, I did a research, I'd heard it before, that Byron Riddles, from Canada, a virologist and immunologist, who did a video. He put on three masks, and he breathed through them, and he fogged his glasses up, trying best to not block the transmission of secretions breath.
Got you.
Poison the mask of eighty-two, five microns. The virus particle is one micron. Your breathing particles are sixty microns or less, and so you're not stopping any of that.
Thank you. What about virtual?
Five minutes.
Go ahead.
Already been up, but I gotta give you a third second, so wrap it up.
Okay, so I can redeem my time? Thank you, or reclaim my time, whatever the voice would be. Alright, doctor, a few more, and then we'll be done. How often should masks be cleaned, if worn six to eight hours?
Every twenty minutes, you should throw it away and get a new one.
Okay. And then lastly, what studies support the facts in your nearly sixty years of practice in medicine as an internist with the specialty in cardiology?
I have listened to videos by known specialists like Dr. Peter McCullough from Baylor, Judy Mikovits, who worked with Fauci, Dr. Terry Tenpenny, who's a practicing physician. And all these people have had, in their practice, excellent criteria and excellent statistics to prove that the mask is not valid, that the Rashid Buthar is also against the mask, because it don't work. And they just pose problems and do not do anything to prevent transmission of any disease like a virus.
Well, we appreciate your time, doctor. Thank you so much for what you do, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
I do want to present with you these, these are Georgia statutes that they'll be presenting tonight during their presentations to other people that are concerned about this, so I'm just putting these here, if you want to pass them through. And then, on, that was doctor's time, on my time, I have five minutes, you said?
So the doctor was on?
Yeah, the doctor, yep. Okay, so real quickly, I'll make this, right, thank you, I'll make this quick and painless. So, good evening, first of all, thank you all for doing what you do, serving. Each of you have the difficult duty to represent parents and teachers and children in this community. We are thankful for that. I appreciate your dedication to being a public servant where it counts the most, and that's the future of our children. Like I said, I have four that are still in school. So, what I am here, though, is to address a issue that I was confused about. So, the state that, the COVID, excuse me, COVID positive cases will impact individual schools differently. However, here, we have an example where this body decided to activate a mask enforcement, as I'll call it, for Risley Middle School that had one positive COVID case during the week of August tenth through the thirteenth, while Glenn Middle had thirteen positive cases and Jane Makin had ten. Those schools are across the town, they're on the other side, and they don't even share the same bus. So, it's these questions that I get confused as a parent of, you know, what do I do? How does any of this make sense to me? Because that's all what we're here for tonight, is to try to make sense of it. Furthermore, this body has stated it receives positive COVID cases from the Georgia Department of Public Health website. Upon researching and comparing the district's positive COVID cases reported versus the Department of Public Health's positive COVID cases that that has reported, there are significant discrepancies. The DPH has significantly lower numbers than what the weekly school reports show, just another thought. While our children are attending virtual school, as they did from August thirtieth to September tenth, this body decided to host a vaccination clinic at the Brunswick High School Gymnasium, open to the public. There were a whole bunch of children not knowing why that happened, because they weren't allowed in school. These are questions. Finally, I have heard that this administration is receiving lots of calls and emails from parents on both sides of the aisle. This is because this matter's been brought to your doorstep. Had you followed the law, which I believe is what we should do, that says about mask mandates and shutdowns and any pandemic measures, you could easily state that you must follow the law, and that's what we should be doing. That would relieve this body of any liability. But, we're not doing that, so the ramifications of that could be costly. In the end, we'll find out where, you know, we thought immunity would actually happen. I personally, as a parent, try to tell my child, we do what's right. And that's simply, simply put, what's right is what's right. And our children are getting confused, because they want to know what's right from their parents, and their parents are having a hard time telling them because of what they're seeing. Like I said, I handed out what I had, the Constitution of State of Georgia preamble states that "To perpetuate the principles of free government, ensure justice to all, preserve peace, promote the interests and happiness of the citizens of this family," that's us, "and transmit the posterity to enjoyment of liberty. We, the people of Georgia, relying upon the protection and guidance of Almighty God, do ordain and establish this Constitution." The Article One Bill of Rights, Section One, Rights of a Person states "That no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, and the property and/or property except by due process of law." So, I'll share with you finally these last famous quotes. One says, "Give me just one generation of youth, and I'll transform the whole world." The other one says, "Give me four years to teach the children, and the seed I have sown will never be uprooted." These quotes came from Vladimir Lenin, who was a Russian communist revolutionary. Some of us might think that this is a little bit over the top, but, if we take a good look at what's happening right now, it's not. So we're concerned, and that's why we're here. But thank you for your time, and I...
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to show you the effects of what harms masks can bring to our children. I have a buddy here tonight, and he is gonna be our expert mask wearer. I have a CO2 monitor that is going to pick up how much carbon dioxide. He has trapped inside of his mask, and then I'm gonna talk about the harms of that. Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna load him up here. The room is telling me that it's pretty high, so I'm gonna pop this battery out real quick, and I just want to make sure it's calibrated correctly. Let me do this one second, sorry. Really high, I'm carbon dioxide in here. Bear with me just a second, it has to have thirty seconds to warm up. Are you gonna be okay, Brody? You good? Okay, awesome. So while that's doing that, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you that some of these children, we've called you guys, we've emailed you, we've told you the problems that we're having from our children that we're seeing, from hypercapnia, and it's, it just, it has a range of different things that it's, that's doing to our children. It's even bothering their academic performance, trouble breathing, visual acuity, cognitive abilities, hand-eye coordination, there's a lot of things that these parents are seeing that we've sent over to you guys. So what we're doing now, tonight, is publicly telling you what we're seeing in our own children. Twelve fifty-nine, that's really high in here. Let's see how much higher it gets inside his mask. It's really high in this room. Are you good? Alright, come on up here, Brody. I want everybody to see what this does. Alright, here we go. It's even like that, because it's over a thousand. If it gets over two thousand, it's very dangerous. Okay, let's see what we got. You just breathe normally, okay? Alright, here we go. Just breathe real normal, okay? Just breathe. It's okay. Breathe through your mouth, baby. It's coming, it's going up. It's going up. These kids have to wear these masks for about ten hours. We're talking about bus rides, we're talking about after-school activities. We're already at fourteen fifty-two. Keep breathing, baby, fifteen twenty-one. Keep breathing. Going right on up. Every time you hear that beep, it's going up. Sixteen thirty-nine. Seventeen thirteen. Seventeen eighty-three. I'm sorry to have to put you through this, Brody. Eighteen ninety-three. And he's had it on for a minute or two? Nineteen sixty-six. Twenty twenty-eight. Sorry, Brody, keep going, baby, you're doing good. Twenty-one seventy-two. Twenty-two forty-three. Twenty-three eleven. Twenty-three eighty-one. Twenty-four seventy-four. Keep going, darling. You're doing good. Twenty-five sixty. Twenty-six thirty-nine. Twenty-seven seventeen. Twenty-seven seventy-nine. Twenty-eight twenty-four. Twenty-eight sixty-eight. Twenty-eight ninety-nine. Twenty-nine nineteen. Twenty-nine thirty-three. You're doing good. Twenty-nine forty-eight. These kids' lungs are still growing and developing. Twenty-nine seventy-six. Three thousand and two. Thirty thirty. He's had it on for a few minutes, imagine hours in this thing.
Alright, five minutes is up.
I'm sorry, I reclaim my time. This is our time as parents.
We've got five minutes, you're cutting everybody else's time.
They, we're all reclaiming our time tonight.
You're reclaiming your time, what does that mean?
You should look that up. We're parents, we're parents, and we are at the hierarchy of what this school board is. We're reclaiming our time. This child needs to show you what's going on here. Twenty-nine thirty-eight. This gets very, very high.
I understand that, man.
That is a...
We have a policy, we have five minutes.
Policy, we help make those policies as parents.
I can appreciate what you're trying to do.
Ask him, huh?
But, now you're disrupting the code made in which it stands for law.
Well, we're not trying to disrupt anything.
I know, you've made your point, yeah, that was clear.
Alright, so, I'm gonna finish this for just a moment, and then I'll have everyone come in, okay? Alright. Alright, so by doing this, you're violating OCGA sixteen five twenty-one, aggravated assault. Person commits offense of aggravated assault when he or she assaults with a deadly weapon or with any object, device, or instrument, which, when used offensively against a person, is likely to, or actually does result in serious bodily injury. This carries a sentence of up to twenty years imprisonment. A mask is an FDA-related medical device by law. What you're doing here is not on the right side of the law. You are also committing sixteen five seventy, cruelty to children. It states, "A parent, guardian, or other person supervising the welfare or having immediate charge or custody of a child under the age of eighteen commits the offense of cruelty to children in the first degree when such person willfully deprives the child of necessary sustenance to the extent that the child's health or well-being is jeopardized."
Ma'am, I give you a minute.
I have another minute, just a moment.
That's it.
Okay.
Those options you got.
Thank you for your time. All we're asking for is a choice for everyone. That includes parents on the other side of this. We just want a choice, I don't want it taken away from anyone. Thank you. Alright, but don't walk up on me.
Next up is Ms. Gigi.
That's what I'm saying. We're not. Hi, I'm Gigi. I'm Gigi Cottler, I've been a, I'm a registered nurse. John Medalla, hey, John, you know me, and I have been in this community for twenty-one years. I appreciate the board's attempts of good intentions for this community. However, the board has stepped way over its skis and has failed, we, the people, and our children. This board is breaking the laws, and you will stop immediately, or you will find each and every individual, one of you, fired from this board and in criminal contempt of court by the people. Let me inform you of the multitude of both state and federal laws that you are breaking. Under the Georgia State Constitution, Article One, Section One, it clearly states, "Every citizen has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." This is also backed up by the United States Constitution, First Amendment. Key word for this board to understand is liberty. What does liberty mean? Liberty is defined as this, "The ability to exercise one's own will and the power to choose." Your mask mandates and your enforcements and forced distance learning excludes these rights of liberty. Therefore, your mandates and enforcements are unconstitutional, both state and federally. If this is not enough for you to understand, Georgia Health Code Law under Article thirty-one one eleven clearly states, "All citizens have no legal obligation to participate in healthcare systems." clearly states, "All citizens have no legal obligation to participate in healthcare systems." Let me define healthcare systems under the law. The organization of people, institution, and resources that deliver health services, and this board is participating in healthcare systems. How? You are enforcing masks that actually are a medical procedure, you're enforcing medical testing to attend school, and you're social distancing to as well attend school. Let me reiterate, under Georgia law, we the citizens have no legal compulsion to participate, and you cannot, cannot punish students who do not participate. For instance, like from wearing a mask or staying home from school, enforced distance learning. Every citizen in this community has the right to choose. Therefore, you must give every citizen a choice as defined under state law. If parents want to mask their kids, they have every right to do so, but the parents that do not want to mask their kids also have every right to do so. And for those parents and board members who say, "Well, we've never had such unprecedented times, so our actions have been unprecedented," I say to all of you, let me introduce you to the 10th Amendment, the Georgia, I'm sorry, the Georgia State Constitution, Article 1, Paragraph 28. The enumeration, enumeration means list, the list of rights herein contained as part of the Constitution shall not be construed to deny the people of any inherent rights they have herein too enjoyed, meaning you can't take away rights that we have. What are our inherent rights? Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Again, this board cannot deny our inherent right of liberty and the freedom to choose. I would like to also introduce you to the 10th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, and I would note, a lot of people are not familiar with the 10th Amendment, but they should be, especially during these times. The 10th Amendment clearly states, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively and the people." In other words, in layman's terms, any right not mentioned in the Constitution still go to the states and the right of we the people. An example of that is a mask mandate or enforcement. You don't have that right. It also, wearing a mask is not mentioned in the Constitution, yet we have the right to not wear one, and people have the right to wear one. In closing, this board must immediately cease unlawful mandates, enforcements, and it is demanded by we the people. If you do not, the people will fire all of you. How can we fire you, might you say? Easy. You, your own hierarchy of this school board demonstrated on your website and in your bylaws clearly state that we the parents are the number-one power of this board, not to mention we pay the taxes for the board to exist. And I find on behalf of many of our parents that you have also acted seditiously against the laws of our state and country. Let me define sedition. Sedition, huh?
Your time is up, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, this is it. What is sedition? Subversion of the Constitution and incitement of discontent toward or insurrection against established authority. The Constitution is the established authority of this country and this state, and your mask mandate and enforcement is the discontent and insurrection against our state and federal constitutions. I'd say mask mandates better stop immediately, or you guys face severe legal ramifications. And I encourage every and all citizens of this community to sue the county and individual board members for breaking both federal and state laws. It stops tonight. Do you understand?
Yes.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Heather Baxley. I have emailed most of you, failed responses, so I guess I'm here to discuss what y'all failed to respond to me about. So, good evening. As a parent, I am thankful for those of you that are truly serving our children. I would like to speak to you regarding the planning and executing of pandemic measures outside of state executive orders. This body, to include every board member, Dr. Spence, along with any mandating, I'm sorry, excuse me, along with any staff from Glen County Board of Education that has directed, facilitated in part or in full in mandating public health state of emergency measures in Glen County District to which you preside after July 1st, 2021, at 12:00 a.m. All could be in breach of Georgia's executive order, ending the public health state of emergency, and has not been renewed by Governor Kemp since July 1st, 2021, and the state law of emergency powers of the governor thereupon not extend him beyond the termination of the public health emergency. So, if the school is relying on a pandemic to shut down schools, they are doing it unlawfully and should convert back to pre-pandemic measures. Sorry, my mouth is dry. In accordance with this order, it is imperative that you retract the current mask enforcement and future shutdowns of our district so our precious children can return to school. Shutting down the schools and mask mandates has negative effects on our children, and there are more and more statistics that show this. We will be presenting these to you as we move along. Finally, I'm sure, after the two, after the last two weeks, you've had your fair share of reports of kids being less motivated to do virtual school. Therefore, please consider our children's interests and mental health first above all. Again, if this madness continues and you ignore our plea, we respectfully ask Dr. Spence, his staff, and those on this board that have voted and carried out motions to violate this executive order for your resignation, I reserve the remainder of my time to the next speaker, and thank you all.
I'm sure some of y'all remember us. So, gonna reiterate, and I don't want to reiterate a lot of the stuff that they said same, same basis. So, the CDC itself, they only recommend, they don't mandate, they don't say you have to, it's a recommendation, just like, you know, wearing pants outside's a recommendation in your own backyard, because people don't want to see that, you know, but if you have, you have, you can take other measures, you know, to... Recommendations aren't a law. Mandates, we're not, we don't want to take away everybody's option. We're totally for everybody in this room that wants to, everybody in the school that wants to. We just want to have the option not to. As, as Brody, our nice guinea pig child, has showed, he was standing still for a minute and a half. I mean, he was at 3,000 as a minute and a half. We're talking eight to 10 hours a day.
And not moving.
Yeah, no exercise, no PE, no moving from class to class. I mean, that, that's a minute and a half. I mean, he couldn't even stand here for the entire five minutes of it and get, you know, probably six, seven thousand by that point. But I just want to go through the NIH website and the internal medicine, they actually did a study that wearing a mask prevents infection of COVID-19 by 2.1%, but not wearing a mask prevents infection by 1.8. So we're talking about a 0.3% difference by our choices. So if we're willing to take the risk of that 0.3 difference, then we'll, I mean, we'll waive your liability to it, whatever, whatever that case may be, if you want to do an opt-out form, that's cool, too, because that 0.3% versus 3,000 on his CO2 monitor in a minute and a half, we're, we're willing to take that 0.3 risk at this point.
Versus, is this helping education?
Going to virtual is not helping education.
It's not even that. In 2018, they did a study of the top 50 countries among 15-year-olds. This was in 2018, we were 27th in reading and 40th in math. That's before the pandemic.
Think about what we are now.
Is education the priority here, or is it safety?
We're so consumed with masks that my six-year-old can't read. Public school, she cannot read. But we teach her at home for two weeks, and, and she can, she can almost read a book because I had to teach her, because we're so consumed with masks and, and, you know, covering, covering everything in hand sanitizer, which, I mean, I'm not talking about everybody's age, but everyone in this room was here in a time where you did not spray down everything with Lysol. You were here in a time where you touched every surface, and your parents did not sit here and say, "Hold on, let me get this Clorox wipe and wipe your hands real quick because you're, you're just gonna die." That, that didn't happen, and we're all still standing here. The only other thing I wanted to touch on is that the mask mandate, it takes away our informed consent. I didn't consent when I signed my child up for school. No one out here signed up their kids for school and was like, "Yeah, you can do whatever you want with my child. You can make whatever medical decisions." Because the day my child was born, every one of them, everyone enrolled in your schools, we signed up to make their medical decisions. No one else signed up for 18 years, I get to make their medical decisions. So what you're doing is considered a medical decision, and you did not pose the risks, the benefits, any alternative solutions. I've asked for alternative solutions. Again, an opt-out form for a 0.3% difference. All we're asking for is exactly what I asked for three weeks ago, is that you leave it up to us to make those medical choices. That is our responsibility, and that is by law exactly what they placed on my lap for every one of my kids, everyone in this hallway. When you were placed on my lap, they, I signed the paper, and they were like, "You're now legally reliable for that child, medically or otherwise." So all we want to do is be able to make that choice and not have, you know, eight people in a room say that they know what's best for my child, and they have no clue what they go through every day. They have no clue their medical history, you have no clue what the thousands of kids in your, in your school system go through, and we just, we pretty much just proved that in two minutes, you have no clue where they actually stand. And he's a perfectly healthy child. What about the overweight children? What about the ones that, that have other problems, asthma, heart problems? You know, they already have issues walking and breathing at the same time. I mean, that's 3,000 on a healthy 10-year-old child, and we're talking about, you're, you want to put it on five-year-olds, you know, that, that's just, it's, it's not right. I'm not sure where our time sits, but I'm gonna give...
Five seconds.
Well, any of my time, any of her time that she allotted back to me to, I want to give to the next person and just reiterate everything that they said, I really hope y'all actually listen to it.
We've actually already had our 30 minutes, so we're on, move on. Thank you very much. We have a few more that we're finding out, but we went, went well over our 30-minute timeframe, so I appreciate y'all coming, but we're up, keep on moving on.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple things I'd like to say, if you don't mind. First of all, the presentations today were really good, and I appreciated that, that people came with facts and people had things that they wanted to address, and they used a medical professional as well. It's a lot easier to hear that and, and work with that than it is for the passion that has come out a lot, from a lot of people. Number two, I would like our lawyer and our legal representatives to look at these things and let us know, are there any things that we are doing illegal that we shouldn't be doing? And talk to Hartley and them, because obviously this is a state issue, but we should address it and let the public know what we come up with and why.
Yes, and why.
Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anything else? All right, we'll go down to number five, approval of the agenda. Entertaining a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move by Dr. Jürgen. Second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor? Unanimous? Six oh. All right, that brings us down to the consent agenda items. I'll read through the additions. I would like to add seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, A, B, C, 1, D, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, A and B. Any policy, John?
No, sir.
Hearing no policy, I'll add E. Any additions or deletions? Any consent? Hearing none, I'll read back through them before we approve them. Seven is approval of the August 5th, 2021 work session meeting minutes. Eight is approval of the August 5th special call in military public hearing minutes. Nine is approval of the August 10th, 2021 regular board meeting minutes. Ten is approval of the August 12th, 2021 special call in military public hearing minutes. Eleven under superintendent report, A is personnel, B is field trips, C, facility committees, one was the good report. Under D, one is approval of the financial report for July 2021. D2 is approval of the IXL site license. D3 is approval of the resolution for St. Simon's Elementary. D4 is approval of the Capitol LA contract for St. Simon's Elementary. D5 is approval of the St. Simon's Elementary Construction Phase III Guarantee Maximum Price. D6 is approval of the fiscal year 2020 grants. A is approval of the CTAE Perkins Five Grant. B is approval of the NEDA M. Lowery 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and E was policy. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent of denials.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Ms. Gibbons, second please.
Thank you.
Second by Dr. Jürgen. Any discussion on any of that? All those in favor?
Just to say that we already talked about this in the work session on Thursday.
Right, yes, we talked about it at length in the work session. Thanks, Dr. Jürgen. All those in favor? It is unanimous, 6-0. Brings us down to the superintendent report, number D7.
We have, in the past, we've always had an MOU with the county in case we have a hurricane or emergency that requires first responders to be staged here in Glen County. And in the past, we've always used Brunswick High School for that, and this is basically the MOU. We got this, the actual document, I showed it to you last week, or Thursday, but we got this today at about 5:25. So, I'm actually, this is the same document, I just kind of, they cleaned it up a little bit, but it's the same verbiage.
There is nothing...
There's nothing to change from what I showed you last week. Basically, if, if there's a hurricane, we have to evacuate and first to find a traffic come in, we would allow them to house themselves in from the high school, and we would do everything we can to make sure they have meals with the food that's left over or food that might be in our other cafeterias. There's also a statement in there about buses, that we would provide buses to get supplies out of Glen County if we need to. And take the steps to... Any concerns or questions about the MOU between Glen County and the county?
I think that this just shows the partnership that we have with Glen County and willing to work together, you know, especially in a time of need or a time of crisis. Obviously, we've been through this at least three times in the last, what, five, four, five years, and so it's, it's a great document, and I think we need to move forward. I'm glad the county reached out or we reached out to them.
I don't, I've got to comment on something else if we're, if we're finished with that one.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll go ahead and, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOU with the Glen County Emergency Response and Recovery.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jürgen. Second by Ms. Gibbons. Getting a lot of effort from across the way there, I like. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor? Here it is. Unanimous, 6-0. Okay.
Yeah, just, just real quick, Dr. Spence, you know, given the conversations that's been, been had tonight, and I know that there are probably a lot of people tuned in to the meeting that we're here tonight, can you reiterate, reiterate for the community, like, what our plan is going forward? I know technically we're probably in green right now, but can you talk a little bit about, about what we plan to do this Friday and what, what the plan is moving forward, depending on how the numbers look?
You know, we have, we have three protocols. We have a green protocol, which means basically we're going to school as normal as possible, trying to social distance, trying to keep things clean. When we go to yellow protocol, we do put some more prevention measures in, one of them is a mask mandate. And then when we went to red, we didn't necessarily have to shut the whole school system down. We could have shut different locations down. But I think people need to understand, it's not about the kids getting sick, our teachers were getting sick. Our teachers were going to the hospital, and when, when I'm sitting there watching our teachers get sick and go to the hospital, it's awful hard for me to say, "Let's keep schools open." And, and I know that everybody's got science. You got science on the mask, you got science against the mask. I've read it, I read it all. But we're gonna try to follow our plan. If we go below 1%, then we will go into the green, and we will remove the masks. That's what we talked about in the summer. into the green and we will remove the masks. That's what we talked about in the summer, and we're going to follow the plan. And and I know people, if we remove the masks, there are going to be people right down here next Tuesday, when we have our next our next board meeting, they're going to want to talk. So all I can tell you is we can, we can follow our plan, which is what I strongly recommend. Hopefully, we'll be in the green on on Friday, and we can, and we can remove the masks and go back to somewhat normal. But I do want to tell you that even right now, as low as our numbers were, they're higher than at any point at any time last year, right this second during the school year. So please understand that when I'm talking about kids, it's COVID, and staff members, COVID. Still, right this second, they're still higher. Our numbers were seven times higher. Three weeks ago, when we asked you to, when we shut schools down and went to distance learning, our numbers were seven times higher. We had almost a hundred and thirty staff members that were sick, and that we just, we could not teach classes. Now, you can send your kids to school, but if we can't put people in the classrooms, there's not a whole bunch we can do.
And I don't, I'm not arguing that. I think you're right. I think, I think we got, we got to a point where, we got to a point where we didn't have the staff to-
That's right. We got to a point-
To run buses and and teach the kids, but but would you agree they weren't necessarily getting COVID in school? Because, you know, if the masks, you know, prevent everything, I mean, if you go anywhere else in the community right now, there are very few masks going on, whether inside or outside. So I guess what I would ask you is what what is your feeling on changing the plan a little bit to allow this to be an option? And I'll be, I'll be honest, I mean, no matter what you think about the presentation tonight, it was effective and 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 powerful to me because of my situation.
Right.
If if you feel like the masks protect you that well and prevent you from transmitting and and prevent you from receiving the 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 disease, what's the problem with making it optional and leaving it up to a parent's choice that would like to send their child to school with or without a mask? I've been in favor of the plan, you know, if I've, I've got some personal feelings on it, I've tried to to do the right thing and and follow the plan, but I think we're at a point where I do feel like it's a personal decision. And if if masks are that effective and that powerful, then by all means, wear one. But I I don't think that teachers, if you, again, if you look in the entire community and really parents, really folks on both sides, I wonder how how much they've they've interacted with other groups and other companies and other individuals. I mean, it seems like everything is coming back to the school system, which is a little difficult to deal with and has been, you know, all along. So I don't think although we had a bunch of teachers out, that that they necessarily contracted at school. I don't have that, you know, I don't have that science. I don't think anybody knows for sure. But just based on what I see in the community and business as usual, I feel like schools are still one of the safest places our kids can be, you know, during COVID or any other crisis that we have. So I would just ask you to keep an open mind about that if we do go, you know, back down and continue to go down to to make it optional.
Right.
If masks are that effective and that's how we feel, and we're socially distancing and we're cleaning, then what's the problem making it a personal decision, personal choice?
That's where we're at in the greens, masks are the only recommendation. I'm fine, look, I, I work for the Glen County Board of Educators.
We're in yellow right now, right?
We're in yellow.
We don't know if we're in yellow, we're operating in yellow.
Yes, we're operating in yellow, because that's what we, as our plan says, that's where we're at on Friday. I work for the Glen County Board of Educators, okay, and I try to do the best I can for our students and for our teachers and for our parents. If you guys take a vote and tell me that you guys want me to make it optional, then that's what I'm going to do. Because I don't feel that strongly about it being optional. I mean, I'm not, it's not like I'm going to die on that one. But I'm going to keep my plan until you guys tell me that.
I was under the impression that we agreed to keep the plan and watch it, our counts on week by week. And not only have students and staff been affected by COVID, we've also lost educators to COVID. So I think that we agreed to work the plan, we agreed to look at it, the numbers on a weekly basis, and we can keep that in place. And as hopefully the numbers decrease, we can go back to normal.
Right now, Ms. Rosie, if we were, if we, if the day were Friday, from the information that I have, even using the DPH number, we're in the green.
Right.
Right this second.
We're where?
In the green.
If 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 we were using, if today were Friday, looking at the numbers we have from the principals, the numbers we have obtained from the DPH, then that's where we are. And and for folks to tell you they got the same numbers from the DPH, they don't, because the numbers that are week, are two weeks, the numbers that they're getting are two weeks late.
Right.
Our numbers are only a week late.
Have we rebuilt our staff to where they're healthy enough to come back and maintain the classroom?
We would have, we would have eleven teachers out if we, if tomorrow, we'll have eleven teachers out for COVID instead of eighty. When the numbers look good, the numbers are dropping.
Looking better.
Just like I showed you on Thursday, they're even dropped even further.
They're looking better.
I thank you, I thank you for finishing the peak, and I thank you for looking good. Who knows, I mean, who knows? You had told me this was going to happen at last year, I would have said there's no way.
All of us would have said no way.
Yeah, right. So, you know, anybody can stand up and talk and act like they know and they don't. I haven't met anyone that knows.
I think we're learning every day something new about whatever strain that we're attracting. So the CDC, the DPH, and everybody else, the school board, we work with the information that they've given us, making the decision based on what we know, and it's a learning curve. It's learning, we're learning every day. Something new come up, something different come out.
Ms. Holden, and there, I, I hear people say, we don't go back and forth, back and forth, what is it going to be? And I'm hoping when it goes down, it stays down until this, whatever this next variant is supposed to come. I hope we don't have to go back and forth.
I hope it makes variants skilless.
I do too.
I think we all, I think that's what some people in the community have lost sight of, and, you know, we've had our internal issues and external issues too, but but we're all after the same thing. I mean, you know, no one wants to lose a member of our staff, no one wants to lose a child, no one wants to lose, you know, a family member. And to suggest that that any of us feel that way is just, is just quite absolutely ridiculous.
I don't believe anybody feels that.
And but I just, so let me ask you this, what, I think I asked you this last meeting, what happens tomorrow morning if Johnny shows up to school with no mask on?
We would offer that child virtual arm. That's, that's really the only option we have.
Think that what Juergen said it best, couple of meetings ago, get vaccinated. That's where Polio went. Even if we went to green, folks can still wear masks.
Right.
So it's all about the numbers right now. It's all about the plan that we've had since we started talking about it in July. And, you know, if we're all going to get through this together, we're going, we've got to be together. So we all have to do our part to help prevent these numbers continuing to rise. So we, if you don't want masks, let's do our part. I would personally say I would encourage more folks to go get vaccinated.
Yes.
I would still encourage social distancing. I would still encourage disinfectant. You know, same thing we did this time last year where our numbers stayed really low in in the green. So, you know, I, I think we need to stick to the plan. It's already confusing enough. We already had one folk, one gentleman talk about how confusing it is. It's confusing enough, and if we go and start changing the plan, it's just going to get even more confusing to parents. So we stick to the plan, we move forward, and we get through this. And I think the plan that we have now is good and solid. A majority of the folks that I've talked to in the community know the plan. Hey, I can't wait till we get back. I can't wait till the numbers get down, we can take the mask off. Let's move, let's move in that direction.
And let's continue, continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Free clinics everywhere, all over the city, all over the county, get vaccinated.
And that's a fine, that's a fine argument, but I mean, I don't think there's any, there's no real proof on long-term effects of, you know, vaccines. And, you know, for children with health issues, for young children, I still don't think there's enough out there. I've heard enough misinformation about it to give me some pause about getting my children vaccinated. And when we go to green, you have the option to put a mask on, but right now, you don't have the option to take one off if you choose to do so. And that's all I'm asking for, is a choice. We're not changing it, the plan by that much. Again, nobody has answered this question. I was talking to my wife about it earlier, and and every time I bring it up, no one answers the question. If masks are what protects you, okay, then what is the problem with me not having one on right now while Mr. Madala has his on? You know, if we're still cleaning, if we're still socially distancing, what is, what is the difference? How am I going to transmit that to you through your mask that is foolproof? You know, and and you heard, you heard statistics tonight about the the percentage with and without, without mask. And and listen, I don't, I don't have the answers, you know, but I I do feel that it comes down to personal responsibility and 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 personal choice. And I think that's, that's the side I fall down on. And so I, again, I haven't heard a doctor, I haven't heard any of you, I haven't heard anybody say to me, you know, if, if Ms. Pearl has hers on and I have mine off, and we're sitting here for thirty minutes or two hours apart from one another, am I going to transmit to her? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
And I don't either, but I do know this. I have three doctors, and when I've been to all three of them in the last six months, I've had to wear a mask when I go in there. And everybody's had a mask on. And that's the only thing I can base that off of, is when I go to see my chemo doctor, I have to wear a mask. When I go to see my family physician, I have to wear a mask. When I had, I had like a skin problem, I had to wear a mask there. All I can do is make educated guesses and do the best I can.
And that's the only place I see it, other than the school system.
Right.
I don't see anybody else mandating masks other than the doctor's offices and the school system. And so, you know, I, maybe-
Didn't the county mandate masks?
Maybe it's-
Plenty, but anyway.
I don't, when I go in the community and the places that I go, I don't see, I don't see anybody mandated, you know. It may be recommended, and and there's, you know, posters on the wall and stuff and on the doors, but-
They are actually mandated in lots of places, and they say it, they don't enforce the mandate, is what goes on. I mean, Home Depot says you don't come in without a mask.
Oh, hi.
Without a mask, I mean-
Same thing, we're recommending it, but it's not an option.
I will promise you, no one in this room hates wearing this thing on. Not even plus.
I don't know.
I think it's probably, it's probably half. I can't take this.
I can't breathe or see. I mean, I can imagine how the child felt in life, you know, with it on, and I just-
You know, again, if you guys want to vote to change that, I have no problem doing exactly what you say do. That's not that big of a point of contention, but I would hate to keep changing things just because we, because, and I certainly don't want to disrespect the people that came tonight because they did do a good job. But next time we meet, there's going to be a whole nother group of people if we change it every time. And then what do we do, change it because they came?
But I think the way you get around that is you make it a personal choice. You're not mandating, you're not saying you can't wear a mask if you come to the school building. And you're not saying you have to wear one if you come to the school building. I mean, that's the ultimate compromise, it's a personal decision. And to say if you show up tomorrow without a mask on, that you've got to go to virtual is, you know, I know we're technically providing the educational, and and I, listen, I've talked to Phil through Andy and, you know, I don't technically think we're, we're breaking any laws.
Or not.
You know, I think that we would have an AG's opinion, we'd have a lot of stuff coming down if if we were. I understand the argument, and it's, it's a powerful argument, I understand it. It comes right down to more of the, or the liberty of the personal choice, rather than law, in my opinion, but that's just, you know, I haven't done the research necessarily that that everybody else has done, but I still think it's a personal decision. And again, I think we have yet to see the harmful effects of the wearing the mask or the, or the vaccination. I mean, I'm vaccinated, I've got people very, very close to me that aren't, but, you know, it's a personal choice, you know, and that's, that's the way this country is. So, what's that?
Mr. Chair, can we move on with the meeting process?
Yes, we can, I think so, y'all. Good executive session.
Sure.
Let's do it. All right, uh-
We'll kick the can down.
Everybody's already left. I told everybody out. All right, I'll entertain a motion going into executive session for land legal personnel.
All three.
Same here.
All right, move by Ms. Sams.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor? It is unanimous at seven oh two. Ms. Pearl? It is unanimous at seven oh two, Ms. Pearl. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Yergin.
Second.
She's laughing. All right, second by Mr. Medalla. Uh, all those in favor? Unanimous, uh, seven twenty-eight. All the, uh, let's see. Entertain the motion to adjourn.
I got something.
Oh, we got that?
Mr. Raji, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, make masks optional effective tomorrow.
Motion is on the floor. I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Like I said earlier, I'd like to stick to the plan. It's confusing enough. I, look, I'm with everybody that I would love not to have to have masks, but this is the plan we set forth last week and, uh, you know, we'll reevaluate it on Friday.
Stick to the plan.
I agree, stick to the plan.
I'll say, um, I agree with Mike, uh, or Mr. Holsy. Uh, I think Friday, I'm hoping the numbers will come down, but if they don't, I think I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of optional masks, for sure. So, um, here and that, I'll bring it to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of making masks optional starting tomorrow, raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay, motion does not pass, four to two. All ready?
Move adjourned.
All right, moved by Mr. Holsy. A second, please.
Second.
Ms. Gibbons, all those in favor? All right, seven twenty-nine.
Maybe Mr. Mike comes to work with me.